Hello everyone, I'm Kakuli Choudhury, Public Health Consultant in Lincolnshire County Council. I'd like to welcome you all to the Mental Health webinar today, which has been organised on the occasion of World Mental Health Day, which as you know was last Saturday on 10th of October. Before we start, can I request you to keep your microphone and camera switched off unless you are speaking? So that we can give the speakers the full attention and there is no disturbance in the background. We are live streaming this webinar as an audio stream on YouTube via our website. And the recording will be available after the webinar. There will be a Q and A session at the end of the webinar, but depending on time, we will also try to take as many questions as possible at the end of each agenda item. There is a wide range of speakers today and they will be talking about the importance of mental wellbeing and the various mental health services available in the county, provided both by our NHS colleagues and also by our voluntary organisations. So without further ado, I'd like to welcome our first speaker, Councillor Patricia Bradwell, who is the Deputy Leader and Portfolio Holder for Adult Care, Health and Children's Services in Lincolnshire County Council. Councillor Bradwell.
Thank you Kakuli and welcome to everyone to our first, I think it must be our first Mental Health and Wellbeing webinar, so I hope everything goes well. And we look like we've all been able to get on to Teams, which is a huge stress issue as all, I know. I've been in and out this morning, but welcome. And we're here to discuss mental wellbeing, which is very important, I think, as all. We never know if we ourselves or a member of our family will have mental health issues at any time. And we do know that very often when someone suffers with mental health, with a mental health illness, they very sometimes don't acknowledge them themselves for quite a long time. So it can be a stressful time for the person who has mental health problems. So I just want to say a few words about the challenges actually that we've recently had with Covid-19 pandemic. Because I think it has the importance of mental health and wellbeing focus. For many people, it's left unable to see, it left people unable to see friends and family. And we only could exercise at certain times of the day and take activities. And those were freedoms that we always usually take for granted. But actually, I think for a lot of people, it did cause them anxiety, the fact that, you know, they were in their home. And you know, if there's only, if you're on your own, living alone, that can be very stressful to you. We've been working with our partners to ensure that there is a whole range of services for everyone who needs it, from children right through to old age. And again, that's very important, should, people should be able to access the right services at the right time. And you know, I know I sometimes am a great advocate that, you know, where, you know, why is this person waiting for a service? And I think especially with mental wellbeing is important that people do get that service very quickly so that actually their illness doesn't progress. I think we want to ensure that support's there to stop people falling into serious mental health difficulties and the need for even more intense support further down the line. And we know that for some people, life becomes very difficult when they've got mental health issues. They can take to drinking alcohol, taking drugs and all sorts of things like that. So I think it is very important that we all do try to, you know, get those services. That's why I'm saying they're so important. We'll be hearing today about a range of services which have been put in place. And they start off with quite low level help and support to very specialist targeted services for people with long-term physical and mental health conditions. And those complex needs adversely were affected through Covid-19. We're also hearing from the Crisis Mental Health Hub and Helpline, which signposts people to places of support in the area where they live. Lincolnshire County Council also has Connect to Support Directory. We also have the Nightlight Service and the LPFT Crisis Team. They're all such very important services for us. And then there's the Shine Network. I know Barry's here today and I've worked with him for a very long time. And I know he's very passionate about, you know, being and now being able to help with the Shine Network on mental health and wellbeing plans. We also have a GP today going to talk about mental health support. And again, that's very important. We have a whole range of, if you think about all the help people and support people we have working, you know, to go from GP right up to that consultant who's giving support is a, you know, really big range of people that we have working in this area. And of course, the Covid pandemic has meant we have had to think of new ways for people to access services. And digitally, that isn't always very, it's not a way that some people, older people, tend to think of communicating. So again, that brings problems to us, but we have really, it is a way now that actually doctors and health professionals can actually see someone and talk to them face to face, albeit it isn't quite the same as meeting someone personally. I think this is important, the subject of mental wellbeing is a very important issue for a lot of our residents. And it's no more, is it important than now? As we listen to the news and across the country, we don't know whether in the next month or so, we're going to go back down into having our lives restricted again. We all need their support in our families, as they need mental health services in the future. And I don't, I don't want to feel a bit depressive in that, but I think it is about us all being, you know, realising and if someone, a friend, isn't acting the way they normally do, you know, it can very often be that people hide mental health issues. And I think we all need to be well aware that, you know, people's lives have been greatly affected by the pandemic. And as we move forward, we just need to look out for everyone. So thank you very much. I hope you have a really good discussion this afternoon. And actually, if it really works really well, then we can come back and we can do something like this again. I think it's a great way, we don't have to travel to a venue. We can all sit in our office or in our home and have a conversation. So I hope today goes very well and thank you Kakuli and her team for arranging it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councillor Bradwell. Is there, are there any, are there any questions? I haven't, I haven't mentioned that, please use the chat box or raise your hand using the raised hand button on Teams if you want to ask a question. I can't see anything on the chat box, nor can I see any raised hands. So if you do have any questions, we will take further questions in the Q and A sessions. So please hold on to that for the time being. I would like to introduce our next speaker, Professor Derek Ward, who is our Director of Public Health in Lincolnshire County Council.
Thanks Kakuli, good afternoon everybody. I actually prepared a few notes because there was a possibility it might get dragged away. So I'll read those through by way of introduction now and then very happy to answer any questions that might come up or we can save them for the panel discussion later. So I'm delighted to be part of Lincolnshire's Mental Wellbeing Event to share with you some of the work we've been doing as a system to promote good mental health and wellbeing. We're grateful to the stakeholders who have taken the time to share their experience and expertise at this event today. It's a core public health function central to our role to help maintain and improve people's mental wellbeing across the life course, from childhood to old age. It's always been important, but it's even more so in light of the Covid-19 pandemic. The unprecedented restrictions on people's lives which were introduced in March 2020 had a sudden and a profound impact on everyone. For a large portion of the population, it instigated significant life changes. Many were not able to go to work or school, to meet family and friends, or even go to the shops or take part in leisure and cultural activities. In the blink of an eye, the very things that support our mental wellbeing were taken away. Throughout the pandemic, we've worked very hard with a variety of stakeholders, especially voluntary and community sector, to support the mental health and wellbeing of the people of the county in order to help them overcome the challenges they face. We have and we will continue to ensure that there is support for the mental wellbeing of frontline staff, that bereavement and counselling services are available and that suicide prevention and awareness is maintained. We're helping our residents to stay connected through our online and telephone Covid support services run by the County Council and through services such as Connect to Support. Today, this webinar brings together various stakeholders who are engaged in promoting mental wellbeing and preventing death by suicide. We know that some people are more at risk than others of developing mental health issues. We know that the most deprived, marginalised and isolated groups are often the hardest hit. And we know that Covid-19 has created even greater challenges and greater inequalities. There are several known risk factors which make people more likely to experience mental health difficulties. These include unemployment, low income, racism and discrimination, traumatic experiences, violence or abuse, physical illness and a lack of access to support. There's a real risk that many more people will experience mental ill health in the wake of the pandemic. But by taking affirmative action, we can reduce the risk of serious and long lasting mental health problems. It is possible to help individuals and communities to recover. And whilst it's not possible to prevent all mental ill health either now or at any other time, it is possible to boost communities' resilience and help people to bounce back from the crisis. In Lincolnshire, we understand the value of collaborative working with stakeholders and partners. We acknowledge that addressing people's needs holistically and helping individuals to avoid mental health difficulties requires a joined up approach, particularly around psychosocial needs, where local authorities and community based organisations can make a significant contribution. Of course, the pandemic and its effects are far from over and we want to ensure that we do not lose sight of the continued challenges. We hope through this event and the work we are doing together that we shine a spotlight on the challenges. We aim to raise greater awareness about the effects of personal behaviours on mental wellbeing. Getting enough sleep, taking regular exercise and eating healthily are not only good for our physical health, but they help protect our mental wellbeing too. I hope through this event, you learn more about the work we are doing and feel more connected to the people who are working hard to make mental wellbeing a priority in Lincolnshire. Thanks very much, I hope you enjoy the afternoon and I'll pass back over to Kakuli.
Thanks Derek, I can't see any questions. So if you have any questions, just give them for the Q and A session then at the end. I would like to welcome our next speaker, Ben Hollitt from Voluntary Centre Services and Rachel Redgrave, Head of Mental Health Transformation in NHS Lincolnshire's Clinical Commissioning Group, who will be talking about mental health in Universal Offer. But unfortunately, neither Ben nor Rachel can join us live, so we have their pre-recorded clip.
Hi everybody, it's Shabana Edinburgh. I'm just going to be doing the clips for Ben and Rachel. And there's a number of other things that they wanted me to show. Just bear with me because technology is a bit slow, so there is a bit of a time delay, but I'm going to make sure that everyone can see everything before I press play. Just bear with me. I'm going to share my screen. Could somebody let me know if they can see a picture of Ben? Yes.
Yeah, yeah, thanks Derek.
Okay, thank you very much, I'm going to press play now.
Mental health and wellbeing. So what is the Universal Offer? Hi, I'm Ben Wright, Chief Executive for Voluntary Centre Services. We're one of the many charities and voluntary organisations working in partnership as part of the health and care system in Lincolnshire. It's a real privilege for me to be asked to support in developing the Universal Offer for Lincolnshire, recognising the role which charities and small groups and organisations play in helping people to manage their mental health and wellbeing. So what is the Universal Offer? The Universal Offer underpins a system response to mental health and the psychological impact of Covid-19. The Universal Offer recognises the local challenges and nuances of individual neighbourhoods whilst creating a universal service to support the whole population of Lincolnshire. The Universal Offer will embed a range of specialists, targeted and universal interventions, building on community assets within primary care networks, the managed care network, mental health hubs and the transformation project work. The Universal Offer takes the whole population approach whilst also targeting people with long-term physical and mental health conditions, people with complex needs, recognising domestic abuse, suicide prevention and children and young people. And also people who have been adversely affected by Covid-19. So what are the benefits of having a universal offer? Well, we believe the benefits of having a clear universal offer are around empowering people, integrating care and reducing unplanned service use. Also supporting people to build knowledge, skills and confidence to be able to live with their health conditions and supporting people to stay well and building community resilience, enabling people to make informed choices about their healthcare. So a few examples of the components of the Universal Offer. We're looking to create multi-identity approach to supporting people with serious mental illness, upskilling frontline staff across multiple sectors through training such as mental health first aid, securing funding and resources to enable local charities to provide support to people to help manage their health and wellbeing, creating local mental health hubs that are accessible to people throughout Lincolnshire and the development of the Mental Health Helpline for Lincolnshire.
That was Ben's clip, so I'm just going to now play a video clip that they wanted me to share with yourselves. Just bear with me while I get it all sorted.
Sometimes, things happen in life which can stretch our ability to cope. Maybe it's not one singular thing, but a collection of things or experiences that can lead people to feel overwhelmed. For those beginning to struggle, it can be difficult to get the support that they need to help them cope. We want to change this and improve access to earlier support. The Lincolnshire Mental Health Crisis Care Concordat is a collective of organisations working together. We recognise that problems with accommodation, finance and debt, relationships, addiction, poor access to health and social care services, employment or lack of support are important factors in people having feelings of being in crisis. Our plan is to create a mental health hub in Lincolnshire, which will include a helpline that covers the entire county.
Hello, Lincolnshire Mental Health Hub, how may we help you?
The hub will connect people with a skilled listener, it will support all callers and connect them with services delivered by our 12 neighbourhood teams across the county. The support delivered by these teams will help address causes and symptoms of distress through one access point. We wish for the hub to coordinate remote professional advice, either by calling directly or connecting through face-to-face services. This will mean that wherever you are in Lincolnshire, you or someone calling on your behalf can dial one number and speak to someone who will be able to help 24 hours a day.
I'm ever so sorry, I've just found out that you were unable to see the video clip. So I'm just going to share my screen again and try it one more time.
Sometimes, things happen in life which can stretch our ability to cope. Maybe it's not one singular thing, but a collection of things or experiences that can lead people to feel overwhelmed. For those beginning to struggle, it can be difficult to get the support that they need to help them cope. We want to choose this and improve access to earlier support. The Lincolnshire Mental Health Crisis Care Concordat is a collective of organisations working together. We recognise that problems with accommodation, finance and debt, relationships, addiction, poor access to health and social care services, employment or lack of support are important factors in people having feelings of being in crisis. Our plan is to create a mental health hub in Lincolnshire, which will include a helpline that covers the entire county.
Hello, Lincolnshire Mental Health Hub, how may we help you?
The hub will connect people with a skilled listener, who will support all callers and connect them with services delivered by our 12 neighbourhood teams across the county. The support delivered by these teams will help address causes and symptoms of distress through one access point. We wish for the hub to coordinate remote professional advice, either by calling directly or connecting through face-to-face services. This will mean that wherever you are in Lincolnshire, you or someone calling on your behalf can dial one number and speak to someone who will be able to help 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. And callers will only need to tell their story once. The Mental Health Hub will start its work in 2020. To find out more, please visit our website and join in the conversation.
Hi everybody, I hope you were able to see that this time. I'm now going to put on Rachel Redgrave's clip. And what they've asked me to do is if there's any questions or queries around what you've seen, to sort of let us know on the chat or let us know after the event and we'll get back to you. I'm just going to get Rachel's clip up.
Hi, I'm Rachel Redgrave, I'm Head of Mental Health Transformation for Lincolnshire STP and Lincolnshire CCG. And I'm really pleased to be talking about the developments that we've been doing. I chaired something called the Mental Health Crisis Care Concordat, which has secured funding to create a mental health hub in Lincolnshire. The first phase of which was launched in March as a 24/7 mental health helpline. The helpline is currently taking 1,400 calls a month. It's a free phone number and callers can remain anonymous if they wish to. As well as providing a listening ear, the call handler signposts to services local to people's neighbourhoods. And the callers also have access to the Connect to Support Directory of Service, which is hosted here at Lincolnshire County Council. And one example is that we've set up something called the Nightlight Cafes in the city of Lincoln. So we've got cafes operating from eight o'clock at night until midnight, seven nights of the week, for people to access where they're welcomed by a trained team of volunteers who provide a warm, welcoming environment. These are accessed in several churches across the city. If an individual becomes acutely unwell, our trained team have immediate access to the Lincolnshire Partnership Foundation Trust Crisis Nurse Team, who can provide a vehicular response to that cafe if required. Our vision is to have a network of cafes and community mental health hubs across the entire county. And the Clinical Commissioning Group secured over £210 million worth of funding last year to start to make that happen. And we've now established some integrated place-based community mental health teams in four test sites in Grantham, Lincoln, Boston and Gainsborough. We've also established a community rehabilitation service and a brand new service for those with personality disorder. Other exciting developments include leading the way digitally, which Lincolnshire is doing. So we've now got over 4,000 students at the University of Lincoln who are connected to a digital platform that connects them not only to their GP practice, but also the wellbeing service at the university and potentially secondary care mental health services. With that platform, what we've been able to do throughout Covid is stay in touch with those students, whether they remain in Lincoln or have had to go home. The next stage for that is actually to develop a chatbot which will also connect to the mental health helpline.
Rachel and Ben asked me to show a poster around the 24-hour helpline and there is actually a soundbite they would like me to play, so I'm just going to get that up and you'll be able to listen to that. And these will be able to, the soundbite and the poster can be shared with you on request. And this is, there's no.
Don't bottle up your feelings, there's something you can do. Talk, you don't have to go through this alone, there are people ready to listen. If you feel like talking to someone might help, call the 24/7 Lincolnshire Emotional and Mental Health Support Helpline on 0800 001 4331. You won't be judged and call the confidential, that's 0800 001 4331. This message has been brought to you by the NHS in Lincolnshire.
I will now stop sharing my screen and that section under Universal Mental Health has now been completed.
Thanks Shab, thanks a lot. Emily, you have got a question, we'll try to answer it, but we may not be able to. Just bear in mind, we'll come back.
Thank you. It was really around the point in terms of the Lincolnshire leading the way digitally. That sounds great in terms of the work that's going on with those students and connecting them to the support that they need. One of the things that was really struck me as we've gone through the Covid pandemic is it has really amplified what we already knew in terms of social isolation and the mental wellbeing of our residents in a very rural county. In particular, some of our older residents. And I'm just wondering how we can look at learning some of that in terms of the digital capabilities and how we can kind of get that out there across the rest of the county, particularly for some of our most older and vulnerable residents who are alone. Wondering if there's anything that we can do around that.
It's a very good question Emily, thanks. Derek, did you want to say?
Yeah, I think it is, it's a really good question. We've got a digital roadmap for adult care and community wellbeing overall, which has got a number of different pilots that we're doing now. A lot of those pilots at the moment are more focused on physical health, but we do have some that are looking at how to connect people up. So we're starting in this area, but it is pilot work. And as you said, I think the learning that will come out of the Covid-19 response will need to feed into that next year as well.
Brilliant, thank you.
Thanks Derek. Emily, did you want to come back in or is that a legacy?
It's a, it was a legacy hand.
That's okay. Claire, you had a question?
Yes, well, it's more of a comment really. Hi Claire Credlin, Neighbourhood Lead from Gainsborough, Lincoln South. I think the digital work, like Derek has said, there is that roadmap. I think there are lots of opportunities, but I think one of, one of the other challenges we have, and I know Lisa Pratt, one of our neighbourhood mental health team leaders on the call as well, is in relation to our farming communities. And obviously, they're considered quite a hard to reach group. So I do wonder around making sure we are capturing all of our vulnerable groups in that roadmap and any plans that we have. And I know Lisa's been working with the Rural Network to think about how we do support those communities better. So I just wondered if that had been captured anywhere in terms of particularly around the suicide prevention work as well?
Yes, particularly around the suicide prevention work, we have got Rural Support Network who are part of the Suicide Prevention Steering Group. So we are linked into that. And I know they have a wide network through which they involve the farmers and they're doing quite a lot of work around that. Does that answer your question, Claire?
Yeah, like I say, it was just more of a comment really and just to put it on people's radar. Lisa's certainly connected with colleagues from the network and also around physical health checks for people with mental health conditions and diagnosis as well. So I think that's a really, really great opportunity, so looking forward to seeing how that progresses.
Thanks, Claire. Emily, did you want to come in?
Yeah, it kind of tied in a little bit with Claire's point in terms of those kind of other vulnerable groups. Because I really loved what Rachel was saying in terms of the night-time cafes in those churches and places where people can go and talk up until about midnight. And whether there's scope for that in other places, in more rural settings, but perhaps targeting the times of day when some of our farming communities or when other people would feel comfortable wanting to talk. Because it's great that the telephone line is 24/7. But I think sometimes having that safe space to have a conversation with someone face-to-face is really needed.
Yes, totally agree, Emily, that's a good point. Gilli? And then Claire?
Hi, it's Gilli from Lincolnshire Rural Support here. Just following on really from what Claire was saying, I'm really keen to hook in with anybody across the county with regards to how we can try and target our farming families. I've started making some contacts with the neighbourhood teams, but if there's anybody else who would like to sort of touch base and look at how we can joint work with regards to our farming families, that would be great.
Thanks, Gilli. Claire, do you want to pick this one up with Gilli outside this webinar?
We already have done, yeah, she's working closely with Lisa. So I think obviously it is around that neighbourhood response and what works for those communities and just that principle that one size, you know, doesn't fit all. So absolutely connecting at neighbourhood level is really important and those conversations have already started. So yeah, that's really promising, thank you.
Thanks a lot for all your questions. I'd like to introduce our next speaker, Barry Ansho, with the project consultant in Shine. You are on mute, Barry.
Sorry, thanks Kakoli. Hello everyone again, my name's Barry Ansho, I'm a project consultant working with the Shine Network on a development programme. There are two phases to this programme. The first phase started in September last year when I became involved, which was around further developing existing services. Phase two, which should have started in April this year but was delayed because of Covid-19, is due to start now in October. And that's a focus on developing new services and two services in particular. One is around developing community assets and resources for social prescribers to tap into. And the other one is suicide prevention with a focus on male suicides. Just to say a little bit about Shine to give you some background. Shine is a community charity, it was set up about nine years ago to promote and provide community-based services for people with mental ill health. It has a commitment to work in partnership with service users and carers, other agencies both from the statutory sector and from the voluntary and community sector. Just to say a little bit about phase one of the development programme has a focus on existing services. We've developed a new website following extensive consultation and discussion with service users and carers. And that offers a more extensive range of information, access to services and helps people to keep in touch both with what's going on in the wider world of mental health, but also to keep in touch with one another as well. We've relaunched the network, sorry, we've relaunched the newsletter to offer a wider circulation of available, both in paper form as well as electronically. We've further developed the volunteer peer link worker service, working with partners across the county. And we've developed a peer link worker training programme which other agencies can access as well. As well as doing all of that, we've extended engagement with service users and carers, which we want to continue with to help them to co-design and co-develop services that we provide, but also to work towards a more coproduction approach to the way we do things. We've achieved most of what we set out to achieve in phase one, but we've been thrown off track a little by Covid-19. One of the positive initiatives to come out of our Covid-19 experience is the development of a virtual approach to keeping in touch with, to keeping in touch to relieve social isolation and loneliness. And we now have regular coffee mornings, virtual coffee mornings, accessed by people from right across the county. And that links with some of the digital comments that were made earlier. We're looking to develop that into other support and keep-in-touch groups to combat loneliness. Phase two developments, which are due to start now, I've mentioned the community asset development of community resources in four neighbourhood team areas of Lincoln South, Grantham, Boston and Gainsborough. These are known as accelerator sites, so that social prescribers have a wider range and a myriad of activities, groups and clubs to tap into as part of their role in putting together non-clinical packages of care and support, which improve people's psychological and social wellbeing. This approach to developing sources of support will include mapping what already exists. And that's looking at the work that's been done around the hub-and-spoke approach and also connect to support. Working with mental health workers in neighbourhood teams, social prescribers and service users and carers to identify gaps and working together to develop new sources of support to fill those gaps. In terms of suicide prevention with a focus on male suicides, it's a key public health priority as males are five times more likely to end their lives than women, which is higher, that's in Lincolnshire, which is higher than the national average. We're proposing to work with people with lived experience of suicides and partner agencies to arrest this trend by working with existing support groups and creating new mutual support groups across the county. That will involve raising awareness through male-dominated industries such as construction, agriculture and engineering, working with the National Farmers' Union, Construction Industry Training Board, Chambers of Commerce, Federation of Small Industries, small businesses, Lincolnshire Rural Support Network and trade unions etc. And also working with related voluntary sector organisations such as Alcoholics Anonymous, Samaritans, Ad Action, Gamblers Anonymous and Veterans Networks and through less formal avenues such as hairdressers, tattoo artists, pubs and clubs, gyms, sports grounds and venues, betting shops and public transport. The aim is to reduce suicides in men with a zero-based ambition on the basis that one suicide is one too many. Suicide places enormous social and economic strain and cost on families, friends and local communities. Mentioning digital and the use of new technology, we see this as playing an increasing role in helping to keep people in touch as well as being able to access services and accessing to other social media platforms. Our aim is to promote good mental health and wellbeing and to support those people who experience mental ill health and their carers. We hope you found this helpful. Further information is available from the Shine website, which is www.linxshine.co.uk. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Barry. Martin, you had a question for Barry?
For some reason Kakoli, I can't hear that.
I can't hear you either, Martin. Do you want to hold on to your question and we'll pick it up in the Q and A session? Yes, I can.
Okay, sorry about that, yeah, technical problems. Okay, I'm based, have you heard any of my conversations? Now, okay, so I'm based over in Mablethorpe, commonly known as the long time forgot because we have no mental health services really over here apart from what Louth offers. Now, I volunteer as a peer link worker, what Barry's team have brought and Mike Martin. So I am the sole peer link worker covering this area, actually I've been running. But basically, our mental health services down here are non-existent. So you just showed the map recently, Mablethorpe wasn't on that. When in places like Gainsborough, Slough that I mentioned, we have never mentioned at all that Mablethorpe, but sort of on the sea and we've got quite elderly population demographically here with lots of mental health problems. I am quite outspoken because I work for the LPFT as well. I go out to all the engagements when we can and I'll say, I'm from Mablethorpe, ask where's that? So my obviously passion is to get this up and running over this side of the county because we are starting at the Marisco Medical Centre, now finished with this, with the mental health hub. Now, we're going to apply for some of this funding that the MTN have put out, but that's the only funding we've got. And I would like the people who are in positions where they could help us, well, listening to this, to put us on the map, please. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Martin.
Okay, thank you.
Shall we pick it up, Martin, after this webinar?
Yes, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you. I would like to invite our next speaker, Dr Ananta Dave, who is the medical director in LPFT. And she will be giving an introduction to LPFT and their services. Ananta?
Thank you Kakoli, yeah, my name is Ananta Davi. It's tricky, it's spelt as Dave, pronounced as Davi. And yes, I'm a consultant psychiatrist and medical director. Firstly, thank you for inviting me to be a part of this Kakoli and team. I know how many of you have worked hard behind the scenes to put this event up, so thank you. And I listened to some of the presentations and the comments, including needing to have equitable services across the county. So that's a point well made. I'm going to give you a very brief overview. I think there are people on this call who are very much more familiar with the various range of services than I am and I'm happy to pick up questions at Q and A as well. I think the important point to make firstly is that although we are a specialist mental health trust at Lincolnshire Partnership Foundation Trust, there are a range of services that we are a part of, you know, which would be considered part of universal offer and the early intervention approach for services before going on to the specialist services. So we work with neighbourhood teams, with our primary care colleagues, whether it is as a part of neighbourhood hubs, social prescribing, carer support, the helplines and providing information through the recovery college. So there are a range of things firstly which come in at that level of information provision, awareness raising, working with the community and at a universal offer level. The helplines that I mentioned are available 24/7 to anybody who wants to access information, help. You know, it's not about having a mental health problem or a diagnosed mental health problem, it's about discussing a concern or getting that early information about what might be available, what's an offer and what they might need to do next. So after this presentation, I'm sure we can send the information round about the 24/7 helplines we've got, which people can access, which are run as part of our trust services, the crisis helplines. And we've also got the Steps to Change service, which is the next level after the helplines. We've got the Steps to Change service, which is a service where there are a range of counsellors and therapists who provide help, psychological therapies and help for common mental health problems and where referral can be made either via email or through a telephone. But a self-referral can be made along with professionals referring in as well. So that's available across the service. It's part of what is called IAPT, the Improving Access to Psychological Therapies. So that's available as a next step. And apart from that, apart from the Steps to Change service, there are a range of specialist services which are provided both at community level and at inpatient level across the county. And I think also important to emphasise that the services are available for all age groups, so including young people up to the age of 18 and then services for adults across all the age groups and then older adults. And services pan mental health, learning disabilities and autism. So that's the, those are the services that are available within the trust. And the community services are delivered through our community mental health teams, which are the specialist teams, but also professionals working with our primary care colleagues, GPs, in GP surgeries and also in neighbourhood team hubs. We also, as part of our inpatient service, we have a range of provision. That is, we have the acute inpatient wards, which are for those who are in crisis or who are severely ill. And we also have recovery-focused rehabilitation wards. And the community services have expanded recently through the Community Rehabilitation Service, through the Rough Sleeper Service. And people will be aware that we've got the Community Transformation going on in Lincolnshire, which has been possible through national funding. And as part of that, we are improving or increasing the range of services and offer in the community. For example, for patients with personality disorder and an increased community-focused approach for those with severe mental illness as well. So that is very quickly just to touch upon really, the services that are on offer. And I think the message to also send is although we are talking about mental wellbeing, we're also touching on suicide prevention. And suicide prevention begins with looking after our mental health, wellbeing, ensuring mental wellness in the best way possible. So it is a very first step actually in suicide prevention. So although we are talking about a stage before somebody becomes mentally ill, that's a very, very important part of suicide prevention. And I'm glad that the county-wide suicide prevention policies that we're adopting respect that public health, population-focused, early intervention-based approach to suicide prevention. So that's what I wanted to say very briefly. And as I said, I'm very happy to pick up questions later on. And I know my colleague Mark Halsel is also here along with other colleagues from LPFT in the audience who can also pick up questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Ananta, I'm sorry for mispronouncing your name.
That's all right, thank you Kakoli.
I can't see any questions in the chat box or any raised hands. So if there are any questions which may come to your mind later on, please hold back until the Q and A session in that case. I'd like to welcome our next speaker, David Bruce. I'd like to welcome our next speaker, David Bruce, who is the Community Outreach Manager at the New Life Centre in Spilsby and Assistant Manager of the Stour House in Skegness. And David will be talking about a number of exciting projects that he is involved in.
Thank you Kakoli. Hi, everybody. It's great to be with you today. We just wanted to share some of the exciting things that have been going off in Spilsby and the surrounding area. So as Kakoli said, I'm the Community Outreach Manager based at the New Life Centre in Spilsby primarily. The New Life Centre has been in operation for around 10 years now. And we started with a church service and a coffee morning. Mental health, mental health services was never something we thought we would get involved in. Never mind start to lead projects in our own area. And from the agenda, you've seen that, you know, this day's clip was called Out of the Ball of War. And that's certainly how it all started. We had a young lady who had moved to our community and she'd come along to a coffee morning with her support worker and just asked what was on offer in the area? Were there any social groups she could join? Something to get her out of the house and interact with other people. At the time, we didn't have a lot to offer, but one of our project workers said that she would meet with her for two hours a week and sit and do some knitting. This took place for quite a number of weeks before people started to realise that the centre was open on a Wednesday afternoon. People would just pop their head in and say, do you mind if I join you? Is it okay if I sit and have a chat? And before we knew it, after about three or four months, we had a real busy hub of people coming in, sitting down, having a coffee, having a chat and socialising in a way that was really informal and relaxed. After about six months, we realised that most of the people that are accessing the Wednesday afternoon session had got some type of lived experience with a mental illness. And they just wanted somewhere where they could come and share their opinion, share their thoughts with each other, but also receive some signposting and guidance. It was at this point that we applied for funding from the LPFT. And we were really successful for about a number of six years to receive that. And that really got the project off the ground. But what developed from that was we were able to open a second session on a Friday. So the first one primarily focused around art and craft. We were able to bring in trained counsellors, mental health support workers to aid and support that session. But what we found from that was that other people wanted support in other areas. So our Friday project became a really informal, comfy place to sit and chill over a movie, have a game of pool, play a board game, but learn life skills. So we had groups of men and women learning how to cook, learning how to manage their bills, learning how to keep on top of the household or do some online training. And that was, again, a really successful project. So we moved forward to the present day and, you know, both projects are still in operation. Just before we went to lockdown, we opened our newest project in Spilsby, which is the Brotherhood Project UK. And that came out of a conversation with a guy in a pub. He asked, you know, what is there for men in our area? What can men access that's not going down the pub? Or, you know, to the bookies or whatever, where can, where can they go? What can they do? You know, because Spilsby is very sparse on its amenities. We've only just got a fully functioning gym this weekend. Apart from that, we have very little for people to access. So we opened the Brotherhood Project on a Friday night and our first session was attended by 13 guys, which was fantastic. And we've got a little bit of funding to be able to bring our counselling on a Friday night every other week. We've got guys on team who have served in the armed forces. We've got active police officers, firefighters, students on team to come alongside our guys accessing these projects. But first and foremost, you know, it's all down to peer to peer. We've got guys coming alongside guys who are currently facing obstacles, difficulties and mental illness in their life as well as addictions. We found that's something that is quite rife within Spilsby. And when I say addictions, I'm talking primarily about alcohol and drugs. So we've been able to come alongside those as well. And obviously during lockdown, we had to change how we reached out. So we were doing Zoom sessions, WhatsApp support groups, one-to-one, you know, walks or meet for coffee, which ensured that all this was still taking place. And over 10 years, the service has developed vastly. You know, we partnered with the Spilsby Good Neighbourhood Scheme and the emergency team in our town to ensure that people could get their appointments. Because I don't know if everyone knows where Spilsby is. If you had an appointment with, for example, one of your support workers within the mental health of at Louth, it's two buses and a taxi. And that's the bare minimum. It's a bus from Spilsby to Horn Castle, Horn Castle to Louth. And if you didn't feel up to walk in, you know, to the offices, it was another taxi. Some of our guys that access the sessions, men and women, don't always want to travel that far and can't travel that far. Just for some people, accessing the centre is a real struggle. So again, it should provide this holistic approach to community. We started to partner with the local surgery. So we have a fast track system, Spilsby Surgery, where we're working with other churches in our networks. We're part of the ground level network. And we have churches all across the country that we're linking with to network with. As I mentioned, I'm also the Assistant Manager of the Stour House in Skegness. So I've been working very closely with Roxanne and we're hoping to try and replicate and bring some of these projects over to Skegness, but with their own, with their own identity. Every community is different. What works in Spilsby might not work in Skegness, but we can bring the idea and plant that seed and see if it will take hold. We're very fortunate that obviously both in Spilsby and in Skegness, we run the food banks. That's bringing in that other element of it as well. We work very closely with the Job Centre, Citizens Advice. We were working with P3. And we were able to provide a support package for guys to access, to get that holistic approach that they needed. So for example, on a Monday morning, when, before lockdown, we would have mental health support workers, we'd have Citizens Advice, P3 and the Job Centre all in one room for two hours. And people could come in and go and see Citizens Advice for one thing, go and see the mental health support worker for another thing, go over to P3 for another thing and then go over to the Job Centre and discuss something else. But they got all that support in one room. Because for some people, to leave their house and do that is a big thing. So if they can do it all in one go, it's so much better. And which one is, we're just waiting now to see where it's going to take us. Everything is constantly evolving. You know, the New Life Community Church is a charity. We're looking to see where we can go next. Obviously, it all relies on funding. But we're really fortunate that we have a strong team of volunteers across both centres in order to hopefully move this forward and just keep picking it up where we can. And the need of the community, because that's what it is, you know, out of the ball of war, starting with the need of somebody in our town. And that is what we'll continue to do. We will develop and grow in relation to what the town's asking for really. So yeah, that's it in a nutshell. Obviously, if you've got any questions, I'd be more than happy to ask them.
Thank you, David.
You're welcome.
I can't see any questions. Are there any questions for David?
Hello? Hello? Hi. Hi, this is, I've lost my camera. This is Father Jonathan Sibley, just following on what David's been saying. I'm the speaker of St Mary's Long Sutton, birth code PE12, nine JJ. Two space points. Firstly, we've just at St Mary's Long Sutton, it's invested a quarter million pounds in creating a new welcome centre with meeting rooms and toilets and a observatory. And that's very welcome. People use that. This is a very good place to meet in the community. Second thing, and do I should say, also a good neighbour scheme and a new garden meets from the church. The second thing is I coordinate hopefully the work for the social issue, which covers both separate issues. We have a funding to do some pieces of work, that implication of COVID. Our first section will probably be at the end of November, depending on speakers, the 28th, 5th of November, or the 6th of November, on Zoom, between 10 and 7.30. I'll give more information into our, to Shetland, Gab and others, I'll sort them for you. Our next section will be in February. I'm just promoting this now for you. But thanks for what you're doing, Dave. We're doing things like that. I stand here in Stataz as well. Thank you.
No, thank you for that information. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other question? And thanks, Martin, for sharing your email address. We'll get in touch with you. I can't see any questions, so I'll invite our last speaker, Dr. Dan Patry, who is a GP and Partner in Lakeside Healthcare in Stamford and Mindspace. Dan, can't hear you. Sha, do we need to play dance pre-recorded?
Unfortunately, Dan wasn't able to send a pre-recording through. He said it was going to be live on the day.
I know he was there at the beginning.
Yeah.
I can't see him now. Okay, while we wait for Dan, are there any questions on any of the clips or any of the presentations that you have heard and seen today? Emily?
Hi, yeah. Just a, just a quick question from me. Obviously, we've talked about the levels and we've talked about lots of fantastic work that's going on across, across the county in lots of different ways. I'm just wondering, how well are we able to evidence the level of demand for service and how that's going to look as we, as we go forward? Particularly as we go into the winter months. I'm thinking about some of the, you know, the fantastic work and the services that we have. But do we have a real understanding on things like waiting lists and referrals and numbers of inquiries across the county and across different demographics?
Ananta, do you want to come in first?
I know that, you know, as a result of COVID, for example, based on recent data, we have been carrying out demand and capacity modelling work in the county, which has meant collaboration between the council, public health and services, that is, primary care and secondary care services, to enable us to get an idea of the demand going forward. And the, the data is a combination of national data, which is emerging based on recent trends and also information about water and share. So that work has been happening. And I know that Kakoli, you and colleagues within the council have done, have really led the work on this demand and capacity modelling for us locally in Lincolnshire. Thank you.
Thanks, Ananta. Does that answer your question, Emily?
I think it's more for me. I mean, it's great that we've got the information and it's great that we've got that modelling. For me, it's about really understanding what that means for our residents across Lincolnshire. So if there is a, you know, if we have got, we're referring, we're sharing support lines, we're sharing the referral mechanisms, we're telling people where to go for help. How long are they waiting for that help and what assurances do we have and what can we do to support those residents in the meantime? Because I completely understand that the services are under pressure. But what do we, my concern is, is that getting worse? Is it getting better? Are there other things that we can do to kind of fill, fill the gap while they wait for, for services? What more could or should we be doing? And are we heading for an increase in demand that we, that we can't cope with?
I mean, certainly, I know that quite a few services are getting back to full capacity after there was a gap. I think a lot of, during the peak of the pandemic recently, for example, I'm talking about recent months. So during the peak of the pandemic, I know that there were several people who could not access help or who didn't feel able to access help. And services had changed. There was more being offered remotely, for example. So I know that there is, based on the referrals that we are seeing to LPFT, to secondary care services, I know that the levels are coming back to pre-COVID levels and the referrals are increasing. When I'm sure my primary care colleagues will say the same thing, that there are more and more people approaching them. I think so. Within, within LPFT, we are certainly, you know, making sure that we are adjusting our capacity to make sure the referrals are being addressed. The waiting lists are variable. But what I think is really important is that there is, to, to answer your question as to how do we make sure that those gaps are not there? How do we make sure that those who are waiting are getting the right information and help? And I think this is where that very close communication between all the colleagues. I mean, there are various forums which are available. So there is a very regular discussion between the primary care colleagues and secondary care colleagues. We have our regular recovery cell meetings between the various agencies within the counties. So I think that communication between various agencies to make sure that we know who is picking up what and how is the information being shared regularly with the people of Lincolnshire to ensure that everybody knows what is available, so that they are accessing what is available, is very important. So, and we are, we do have that means of communicating with each other and maintaining those links so that we are working as a system rather than each agency working in silos. For me, I think that is crucial.
No, that's great. Thank you. Because I think one of the things that's really struck us, particularly during the COVID response, when, when we've been talking to residents, is that there's, there's been a whole cohort, there's been the kind of people that we would expect, the people that we've proactively contacted, that we know about, that are already involved in some kind of service. But we have discovered there are more people out there who are struggling with their mental health that have never had to ask for help before and, and don't really know where to start. And perhaps sometimes even didn't recognise that that support was available and would never have considered themselves as vulnerable. And I know one of the things that was quite striking to us was the impact of the, the business community and business owners. You know, who, who were really, really struggling with the impact and the weight of, of the challenges that they were experiencing. So again, that's kind of new information and new data. So it's really just trying to understand that, kind of countywide.
Yeah. I think the work of the neighbourhood teams will become even more important because it is about making sure that help is available as close to the person as possible in the community and making sure that we are having de-stigmatising ways of offering help and support available. So I think, you know, those, those hubs and teams, the community hubs will become more important than ever. And of course, you know, having those links and all the agencies talking to each other. So thanks for that point, Emily.
Ananta, team has put something on the chat box about patients having to wait for up to 18 weeks or more for an appointment.
Uh huh. This is, is this for, for improving access to psychological therapies? Is this for the steps to change service that people are asking for? And I know the steps to change team, and I'm sure there are colleagues here on the call who are from those services. And I know the steps to change team is actually looking at making sure that we are doing what we can to meet the capacity, to meet the demand, sorry, that is coming up in terms of referrals. I will take that back and find out which of those teams are having, which of those areas are having longer waits than others. But I'll take that back. Thank you.
Many thanks, Ananta. I can see Dan has joined us now. So Dan, we are running a bit ahead of time. So we'll go to your item now. Bottom up, community mental health support. Dan is a GP and Partner in Lakeside Healthcare in Stamford and Mindspace.
Thank you Kakoli. Yes, good afternoon, everyone. I'm sorry, I've just been able to join you. I was hoping to be here if, if the day was going all right. But it's been a bit busier than I'd anticipated. So I'm doing GP stuff as well. But I'm now here and in the room and I've got my full attention. And I guess I was asked to talk because I'm a GP with an interest in mental health. I'm also a clinical director for one of the primary care networks down here, covering Stamford and part of Bournemouth, four counties. But also, I think the main reason was because a few years ago, I founded a local community group, which has become a charity called Mindspace Stamford. And really, I guess. And really, I guess, because I sit with those different hats on, I very much see from a GP perspective, I guess I'm closer to the community, if you like, than secondary care, which is completely appropriate because I sit within the community, you know, managing a population health need rather than a caseload. And I guess I'm still one of those old-school GPs that lives on the patch that I work in. I think increasingly, GPs are averse to that. But I don't think you necessarily get a true feel for the community that you're working in unless you live there. And that's not that we have to, and I can't expect people to. But one of the benefits of me living here and my kids going to school here and all that is that I get more of a feel of what's going on. So how did this all start? About five years ago, when I started working in Stamford, I'd had the benefit of being invested into with a national programme around mental health leadership when I worked in my previous post elsewhere. So I brought some of that into reality, really, by just, in effect, putting my head above the parapet here in Stamford and going, who wants to have a conversation about mental health? And what we can do about it as a community? So it was called the Stamford Mental Health Forum initially, and we had several meetings, about 50 people came to them. And we just really, it was just like a town hall style meeting, a facilitated conversation, really, around what people or citizens viewed as the gaps. And it was a fair mix between other professionals, there were quite a lot of teachers and people in the education sphere that came along, but also just some people who were struggling themselves or caring for people who had mental health difficulties. And the long and short was, what I now, kind of having gone through a journey, realise is, is the main issue is a lack of sense of community, social isolation and loneliness and not having somebody to hear your story. So it was all about listening and being listened to. But ultimately, not having people alongside you that you can share your life with and the ups and downs of life, but particularly the downs when you're struggling, if you haven't got that, those people around you and that community around you, if you're not enmeshed in a web of interpersonal relationships, that's why your mental health might be poor in the first place and then deteriorate more than it might do otherwise. And actually, as I've gone on this journey, realised that there's more and more evidence around this kind of stuff. And that ultimately, you know, we know that if you are socially isolated, it's as detrimental to your health and your longevity of life as having diabetes or smoking 15 cigarettes a day. So it is a significant factor in keeping people well. And I think, I think there are many, many things that have got us to where we are. I think, you know, it's, there's a bit about the sort of individualistic culture that has become the embedded way, if you like, of doing things in the Western world over the last 40 or 50 years is, I feel, quite a big factor. But I also think we have, we've just increasingly shifted to a culture of doing to people. And we have disenfranchised citizens and communities to support each other. We've disenfranchised them from having an ability to feel that as a neighbour or somebody else in the town or in their workplace, that they can hold on to some of that distress and it's okay for it just to be shared and heard and validated, that that is actually helpful to the person. And for ultimately for their, you know, today's events of that wellbeing, for their wellbeing to be enmeshed and part of the social concept of what health is, you know, doctors do not produce health. You know, health is a social construct. It's out there. Your wellbeing is about how you feel connected to people and how your life is and all those things that would often be put into this, from a health perspective, is often put into the prevention end of the spectrum, which is often not funded well enough to do it in a really good way. So I think we need to start looking at ways in which statutory services are able to support citizens to help one another, or communities to stand up again. You know, when did we get to the stage that when you were struggling with life, there's the stock responses, oh, well, you need to go and see a therapist, or you need to go and see a doctor about that? As opposed to, actually, that conversation doesn't happen because you're just having those conversations with with loved ones or neighbours and things. And what statutory services can never do is is care for people in the true sense of what caring for another human being means. You know, an institution, an organisation provides services. It cannot provide truly what you mean by the word care for, you know, care in the terms of what a neighbour does or what a friend does or what a family member does. So what I'm hoping is ultimately that the clinical primary care networks and the neighbourhoods, if you like, of Lincolnshire, through the Primary Care Network Alliance, we're now kind of stepping forward a little bit more as a as a voice in the system. And so I've joined the sort of the leadership team around the sort of mental health transformation programme for Lincolnshire. And I'm really hoping that by being at that table and bringing this perspective to the table, that actually, because we can start doing this more on a countywide basis. I mean, there are lots of other good charities and community groups kind of doing some of the work that Mindspace has been pushing in other towns around the county. But I think, I think it's even beyond the support that groups like Mindspace are doing. I think we're doing some good stuff, you know, we are also putting on some services where people can connect as community and be heard and listened to. And they are arguably closer with a lower threshold of entry than secondary care services. But they are still a little bit of a done-to model, rather than the citizens and building up the citizens. So I think for those people that might have been around a bit longer than me, I think, again, in my learning and my reading, it comes down to what we call sort of asset-based community development, which I think has been something that's waxed and waned over the decades. But I think we're entering a season where we recognise the need for that. And there are lots of good resources, of good information about those kind of things. And so I think it's about how we we continue what we're doing as statutory services, but if you like, start stepping back from service provision into the communities and stepping back at the same time whilst allowing communities to find their own answers and responses to issues. So that's, that's kind of what I mean by the bottom-up transformation. And I'm hoping, because a lot of this is really counter-cultural to where we've got to, I think, from the statutory side. So it's going to lead to some interesting discussions, I'm sure. But it feels right. I think it's much more humanising. And I think it's got wellbeing at the centre, and that's wellbeing for a population and everybody. You know, we use the phrase a lot in Mindspace, everyone has mental health. Well, everyone has mental health and wellbeing. And it's the understanding that even if you are not struggling with your mental health at a particular time, that it's about being more conscious and emotionally literate, that you are doing things that are good for your wellbeing when you are in a better place, so that hopefully you'll prevent ill health in the future. That's me, I think. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Dan. Any question for Dan? Before I go to Tim's second part of the question, of his question. I can't see any hands raised. No? Okay, Ananta, this is for you as well. Tim has asked a second part of his question, whether there are any services available to people who are waiting for the step to change services, where they can go while they wait?
Yeah. I think, you know, what we are increasingly aware of is because there are, I think, the vast majority of LPFT, there is a, we are trying to see them within waiting times, that even that short wait can feel very difficult when people are, you know, waiting for help. So what we are trying to do is, you know, firstly, constantly refresh the information that we give people. And the information is not the same as being able to talk to somebody, but some early tips or some support services or information about helplines, which is available while they wait for steps to change. Constantly internally, we are making sure that those who are waiting on the service are the, you know, right ones and refreshing our review of the waiting list to make sure that the people who are waiting don't need some other help. And of course, you know, as a, we always know that some of the people who are waiting on the waiting list may end up developing a crisis and we do not want people to wait till they go into a crisis. But sometimes it becomes necessary that rather than being on the waiting list, they might need to access help, which is of a more, you know, critical and a more quick response than being on a waiting list. So that is what we try and do, constantly review the waiting list, provide some initial information about maintaining wellbeing and things they can do while they are waiting for help. But I think also, you know, the point that Dan was making about how can we make sure that we are, and this goes beyond specialist mental health services to that population-based approach, that even while people are waiting for services like counselling, et cetera, what is it that we can do at a community and population level so that people feel it's a combination of being empowered and connected? And that sense of, you know, belonging to a community where people are able to get that help in a less stigmatising way closer to home? I think there's a real need to develop those, those kind of approaches so that people have a way of connecting to others while waiting for things like counselling and therapy. So that's what I think, you know, it is a combination of help out there in the community plus how we keep on reviewing our work and waiting lists. Thanks.
Thank you, Ananta. I will go first. I saw Mark's hand. Mark, also, did you want to add anything to Ananta's, what Ananta was saying?
Hi, thanks, Kakoli. Can you hear me? Yeah. Just really to build on what Ananta was saying, I think to briefly pick up on Tim's earlier question, the way, particularly for steps to change, our really robust oversight through the board of directors and as Ananta's already said, really, they're constantly reviewed and monitored. And anywhere that there might be any challenges or difficulties, those are picked up immediately through through that, through that structure. Whilst people are waiting in between, so there's the set timeframes for the assessments to occur and then for counselling or specialised CBT or psychological wellbeing practitioners, there's set timeframes between the referral and treatment, which are met. Again, as Ananta said, if you're the person that's actually waiting for that appointment, you're the person that's waiting for that therapy, that can be really challenging, that can feel really difficult. For those individuals, what we do do is we provide self-help materials and links to the EveryMindBatted website. Can also advise people that, you know, that they can get back in contact if they do think that things are getting worse, are going into crisis. And so then we can keep in touch with them and make sure that people don't feel like we've, you know, they've fallen through the net or they've been forgotten.
Thanks, Mark. First Emily, then Sha, and then Tim, I'll bring you back again.
Thank you. It was more of a, just a kind of thought that came to me as Dan was talking, particularly around that community response and something that was said by Ananta in terms of the kind of reducing the stigma. I think people, you know, we know that people often, or, you know, haven't wanted to talk about their their mental health and that there has been that stigma attached to it. But then if you're the person who really cares about someone and they tell you about their challenges, I think there's also that flip side of, oh, my goodness, I don't have to deal with this, I don't want to make it worse in terms of the general kind of population, that general community feel. So I think when we're putting out the kind of strong messages, and there has been so much recently over the last couple of years in terms of, don't bottle up your feelings, talk to someone. I think there's probably a little bit more we can do, particularly in Lincolnshire with our demographics, around what to do if someone talks to you about those challenges, whether that's, you know, I would say down the pub with your mates, but I don't think that's really how people talk these days. But, you know, if someone does approach you within your community or your social group or your friends and family, kind of how to deal with it? Because I think there will be some people who genuinely close down and because they don't really know how best to respond and they don't want to make something worse, to give them those tips on, you know, letting someone talk and just letting them talk to you, rather than kind of immediately jumping in with a solution, just those types of tips.
Thanks, Emily. That's really good. Sha, did you want to comment?
Yes, I did. Thank you. I just wanted to add a bit more from, based on what Ananta was saying and Dan and Emily and Mark in that, you know, we are, there are waiting lists and we can't help that, but there are those supports out there. So it goes back to Ben and Rachel's presentation around the universal mental health offer, because there's the helpline, there's connector support, there's all the groups out there. And it's about encouraging people to use those types of services while they're waiting in the interim. And then like Mark was saying, if people are, feel like they're deteriorating, that they can come back to Mark's organisation for that support. And I think what Emily was saying was absolutely right, that we as a community need to be looking out for each other and we need to be supporting each other. So it is giving people that opportunity, that time for them to just talk to you. Sometimes people just want you to listen, not to judge, not to give advice, but really listen and if, and sort of try and get them to understand if there's something that they need to do. It's all about our self-care, it's all about empowering individuals. So that was the only thing I wanted to add. But I do understand that sometimes people don't know where to get help and it is out there and we will try and help. Like I said, the first thing I would ever do is talk to someone. If they couldn't help me, I would ring the helpline now that is available. That's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
Thanks, Sha. Tim?
Yeah, just to come back on the original question. And Sha's pretty much touched on the answer I was hoping to hear, to be honest. But it's about referring people into what groups are out there, not just to the website or to the helpline. People perhaps want to talk to one or other people informally, without, as we've heard before, without having to go down the pub and whatever. And it's about being aware of what groups and organisations are on your doorstep. We've heard a lot about what's going on, what Dan's doing in Stamford, what's going on in Mablethorpe and Spilsby. But who's giving that information out? Because GPs, no disrespect, Dan, the GPs very much are not aware of what's going on. What is on the doorstep? Thank you.
Can I come back, Kakoli?
Yeah.
I mean, I think, yeah, good point, Tim. I mean, I think the, I think that's why, you know, ultimately, I guess, I'd like to get to a point where the mental health service that Lincolnshire is providing is completely connected in with the local communities in which it's serving. But actually, the first port of call for people is, you know, the hub on the high street. So be it the Mindspace drop-in or the Tonic Health location in Spalding or the Beehive in Grantham. I'm more aware of what's going on in the south than further north, but other places in the rest of the county. That, you know, in effect, most of our market towns have a hub or a place where people can go to and it becomes known for that, that place where you can get some face-to-face tangible support there and then. I think it comes back to, you know, an aspiration around what I would term sort of a compassionate community, though. So Mindspace has already done training in all of the local schools around the five ways to wellbeing, some listening skills and some, and in effect, increasing the emotional literacy of children. We've got a journaling project, a mental health journaling project going on with all the local, all the kids, you know, thousands of children in Stamford and a few up the A1 as well. You know, thousands of children in Stamford, uh and a few up the A1 as well are already doing this project. Um, so that hopefully as they become the citizens of tomorrow, so to speak, they already have some of that um awareness uh and the resilience. We're just starting a project to do some similar stuff with local businesses. I, I think Emily mentioned that. You know, actually, how do we, not necessarily the big boys that have got HR departments and can come up with, you know, wellbeing strategies for their businesses. But, you know, small, small, small businesses that might be either, you know, just lone, uh sole, sole trader, should I say, or, or even, you know, just three, four, five, 10 employees. Um, so we, we're kind of helping to provide some uh support into, into there. And that was funded by a grant from um SKDC actually. So, you know, the district understood that that was worthwhile. Um, and yeah, so I, I think it's how we just push out and th- this is all prevention stuff and I think we just haven't really, we haven't had really, I don't think, a really joined up, connected plan on that before. But I think we are increasingly in that place and I think, you know, the, the big organisations that fund these things are all starting to get behind those kind of things as well. So, um, yeah, that's just a thought, really.
Thanks, Dan. Nick, I'll come to your question now.
Oh, thank you. Um, this is really a question for Dan. Uh, I'm a mental health social prescriber. I work in Lincoln City South. And in, in terms of the as- answering a previous questionnaire about how do you link in with the, the GPs linking in with their patients to activities on the ground. And that's what I and my colleagues are all about, although I tend to specialise a little bit on the mental health side. I just wondered where you saw pr- social prescribing being relatively new in this area, how that fitting in with all this?
Yeah, I mean, I see that as a massive, I, I think it's what you, what you described as social prescribing. And again, I don't think we've bottomed out in Lincolnshire what is social prescribing yet. Because the primary care networks are able to fund some social prescribing link workers. The Mental Health Transformation Programme is funding some specific mental health, social prescribing link workers. But the link workers don't a social prescribing platform make, if you like. Um, and I think i- it's also, uh, you know, the, the whole thing that, what is social prescribing something that we do and we tick a box and then you go and do a plan with a person and that's it? Or is that, or is that just the loose interconnectedness of what's out there and becoming aware of it?
It's a bit of both. It's, it's, it's more complicated. It's certainly much more, much more complicated than that. It's knowing about what's out there and what's open. But it's very much, you know, getting to know that person on, on an individual in-depth basis and finding out what will help them, uh what they see themselves would help them with their own mental health. And referring them with support into an activity or an organisation or whatever it might be. We're very much there to li- listen to that particular person. Uh, uh, but we, we also need to know what's actually on the ground as well. So the word is link, link workers.
It is. And I think, I think what the, uh, so the link worker, what we, I don't think what there's enough capacity in the system as it currently is. This is an opinion.
It's not enough of us.
The link, there's not enough of you. The link workers, the way NHS England see the role is very much doing that stuff with a person. And not necessarily as much of the community development side of social prescribing, which I think is a massive untapped.
Yeah, I'm ba- I'm based in the community. I'm ba- I'm supposed to be based in the Lincoln City hub, which hasn't yet opened, but that is the idea. But we are, and we are starting to work slowly but surely in that direction. But, uh, yeah.
So our link workers come to Mindspace with some of their clients or citizens or whatever you want to call them and, 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 because I think, I think, again, personal perspective on this, I think what I think needs to be more explicit um is around the, the, a social prescribing link worker, you can, you can do that meeting one-to-one. But everything needs to be about how you're building community for that person. Not just, just, not just what, what, what makes you tick, but what does community look like for you?
Yeah.
And how get you re-emeshed in those interpersonal relationships? Because we can't go on providing services that constantly, you know, they, they come around again because they haven't yet then built those interpersonal relationships, so that that is where they get their support in the future.
Yeah.
So that's.
Yeah.
And I think we need to be absolutely explicit about that and I don't think we are being so. Because people, people come to us and go, I don't like doing group stuff. And it's like, well, yeah, but it's not group, it's community. And that's just how we have lived as humans.
Absolutely.
You know, so, um, yeah.
It's connecting with the social because we're social animals. And yeah, that's it. Thank you.
No, thank you. Well done.
Thanks, Nick and Dan. Uh, Daniel Fleschborn, I'll come to your question now.
Now, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Yes, good. So I just wanted to talk about, we're, we're missing one important thread running through all of these services. And that's the carers of um these service users or clients or whatever you'd like to call them. When there is a crisis or somebody's um got men- mental health issues, for mainly the first person that they're going to turn to is their carer or their family. Um, even while they're waiting to, to, you know, making calls to steps to change or, or waiting for a crisis intervention or the crisis team themselves, the carer is always there. The carer takes that role 24/7. And all of the things we've talked about today, we haven't talked about carers at all. We haven't, and, and they're one of the biggest links in that chain. Um, and, and looking at some of the reports from um Carers UK, you know, carers are at serious risk of falling into depression and anxiety and sort of all those mental health problems themselves in their caring role of, of service users, especially during the days uh Covid times, shall we call them. Um, and I'm wondering if we can sort of look at that aspect as well, you know? Because at the moment, we, we've sort of, we've just talked about the service user. But, but when you've got a service user, you've also got a carer, you've got a family, you've got all those other people that it affects. And we need to sort of have a more open and rounded look and not just focus on that one person, but their entire network that, that sits around them as well. Um, and how we help them, help those people. Because like at the moment, um, you have the CSC and Carers First, but you have, but, but you haven't got um groups at the moment because you can't, because of Covid. You've got, you know, this sort of limited support for carers um who es- especially now need as much support as they can get because people are more at risk uh of, of, um, of a crisis during Covid. So, yeah, so we need to look at the whole, rather than just, just focus on, on the one person, I think. Um, if we can discuss that as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Daniel. Who wants to answer that question? Dan?
Uh, I completely agree, Dan. I mean, I, 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 like I said, I'm very much about the whole population. So from a, from a primary care network perspective, when I'm talking about mental and emotional health and wellbeing, this is for everybody. Um, so it is, it is either that it's the person suffering, it's the carer, it's the family. It's, um, it, it's, it's just citizens who are living on that patch, you know, the, the patch that I am looking after, if you like, you know, uh, I'm, I'm interested in everyone having good wellbeing. Um, I, I think some of the, I, I've put a response on the, on the, on the chat, but I think, you know, one of the things about a Mindspace session, so we, say we have our, one of our circuit sessions that we run, you might have some people there who have had severe mental illness in the past. You've got carers there, you've got people who have never seen LPFT but who just get that being physically active is good for their wellbeing. And they're all mixed up together. And actually, that's community, isn't it? That is what, that is what it is in its essence, is that we're not defined by the, 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 the health status that we have, but we all live on this patch and we all want to do these things together. Um, I, I don't, I can't claim we've got it perfected yet. Um, and we do actually have a separate, specific um carer support group, a peer support group that meets. Um, I, I guess, I think it's, I'm always trying to be mindful of specific groups that need specific things, but also trying to bring it back to, but then everybody needs that thing. So how do we do it collectively and how do we make that a thing that, because the, you know, the carers might learn off somebody who's, who's actually ill with a similar condition and they've come through it in a different way. Or they might learn something from people who don't necessarily have caring responsibilities. So I think it's just being open to, to all of that. Um, yeah, I'll leave it there.
Thanks, Dan. Emma, did you want to come in?
All right. Hi, Kecole. I wasn't going to answer this question. I had a, a question of my own, but I'm just really pleased that Daniel raised the question. Um, if, if I can comment on this topic if you like. Um, would you like me to?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I, I completely agree with Daniel. Like, I, I think um a whole, taking a whole family approach is, is just absolutely fundamental to success. Um, I'd, I'd be very happy to continue the conversation with colleagues um who have a particular interest in carers and would just like to open up um the number of different questions really, I think that need, do need, you know, would benefit from being discussed. Um, um, but I, 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 I also think it's about children and young carers impacted um by um the mental health of their parents and siblings. Um, and I, I did want to ask a question around um uh children and young people. Um, can I ask, ask my question now?
Yes, yes, Emma, go ahead.
Okay, so I suppose, I, I mean, I, I know that you've done some fantastic, just going back to the suicide prevention topic. And I know you've done some fantastic work with raising awareness with schools and, you know, my, my own kids are attending seminars and so on, um, last week, this week, um, which is, has been brilliant. Um, and I suppose I just, I just wanted you to say a little bit more about how the work that you've been doing today kind of links with young people. I, I'm, I'm very aware of um both actual and attempted suicides in the school age population and just thinking about how we support not just the young people themselves in distress, but also their friends who are supporting their friends in, in extreme distress. And I suppose, and this can be a massive um thing for a young person to bear, to do. It's, it's, it's a large burden on young people's shoulders. And I just wondered if you could say something more about that. Um, I, I think the other element related to that that I wanted to raise was, I think that the, the risk of more fragile, the risk of more fragile mental health and risk of suicide around young people who may be coming out, you know, kind of lesbian, gay, trans and so on, particularly if their own families are not particularly supportive or it's difficult to have conversations around coming out. Um, I'm, I'm not equating being lesbian or gay to poor mental health, far from it. Um, but, but the experience of coming out in an unsupportive environment can be extremely difficult. And I just, I just wondered if you could say, if it's just, if you could say something about how young people are being supported and, and kind of particularly lesbian and gay young people.
Who wants to take that question? Dan, do you want to try? And then Ananta?
Um, I guess as I've mentioned, I mean, I think, I think I've shown with, I guess, the work that Mindspace has already been doing, I get that. Um, I think I'd like to, as like a primary care network, get to a place where we have a uh, there's the mental health stream and I also see a children and young family stream as a separate issue. Again, it's like seeing them as a, they're, they're, it's not their specific health condition, be it even, be it mental health. It's actually just how do we support, you know, children and families as a, as a collective, I suppose. And I, I think it's, a, a lot of it's going to come down to how the health sector starts genuinely taking prevention and working with schools, I think. Um, uh, and, you know, there's some really good stuff out there. Gloucestershire have got a really good programme called uh Facts for Life around growing up well and sort of, you know, he- healthy living uh syllabus really for, for schools. Um, that's got some really good evidence behind it now. Um, how do we get those sorts of training over here? I'm really interested as well, I was reading just, as part of the National Transformation, I was involved in um trauma-based therapy for sort of personality disorders, but actually recognising that um there's now trauma-based approaches for schools as well. Um, that I think, again, is, it, it, it's a lot more real and human. Um, I think uh in terms of the way we look at managers, so I think long and short is, I think we've got a journey to go on, but I think the, the willingness is there. And I, 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 I guess I can only say that, I think, I'm, I'm generally hopeful that having a, the P, the P, the PCNs are a real game changer for the NHS. And they're really putting the primary care with a collective voice at the top table. And I think the point of it's GPs is we get people as, as a person, as a life, you know, that, that is a person with a life who's got those interpersonal connections. I'm not saying other bits of the system don't get that, but we feel it and see it with every concept we have. So my hope is that through that, we will get more, um, we'll get this stuff more because we'll be there pushing it going, hang on, no, you can't, you can't just start this at 18 and go up to, you know, this has got to be for kids as well. Um, yeah. Uh, I haven't got a specific answer around the LGBT stuff. Um, it's just something we haven't, again, and again, I, I, I'll, I'll be mindful of this. I don't want Mindspace also to be a proxy voice for the community because we're still an organisation, even though we're closer. So I think it's how we make sure we keep listening genuinely to citizens. Um, and that's the challenge that I don't think we've yet got an answer for.
Thanks, Dan. Ananta, did you want to add anything from your perspective?
No, I think just to reinforce a very important points raised, Emma. And I think, you know, we are talking about uh things that need to be in place even before young people need specialist mental health services. And it is that joining up between schools, communities, hubs. But also, I think, you know, we know, uh, you know, the information coming out nationally as well as what we see locally is. You know, it's a combination of the right support at school, support to carers and parents, act, you know, the right support around social media usage, you know, access to safe spaces, either to meet up or, you know, virtual meetup or, you know, to be able to get some fresh air, access to appropriate physical access. I think there's a physical activities, there's a range of things that we need to get together for young people, even before they reach the stage of, you know, significant mental health problems and needing help. And yes, I can see in the chat line about, you know, whether it is every child matters, every mind matters, you know, young minds. So there are a lot of um virtual resources and also there are helplines. But it needs, uh, again, a coming together of uh all aspects. The helpline and the virtuous play, place plus things in the community, support for carers and families. And uh I, I think, you know, although there, there is a lot being done, I, you're right, especially the pandemic has exposed the different ways in which different age groups are getting affected and the pressure on young people due to the uncertain uncertainties around education, social isolation. I mean, we've seen what's happening with children, young people who've gone on to university, for instance. And the, and the fact that children in schools have to self-isolate when there's somebody in their bubble who becomes either symptomatic or infective. So uh dealing with the uncertainty and the anxiety while being isolated is a big thing. And without pathologising it, without medicalising it, but at the same time, making sure that there is the right help in the community or in the school space to deal with it, I think is important. Clearly there is, that's going to be more and more a need for the future, I think, you know, to safeguard our young people's mental wellbeing in the best way possible. Regarding, uh, I think, you know, I don't think anybody can argue with the fact, you know, young people need to be supported when they come out. And they want to discuss their, you know, gender identity, sexuality, gender dysphoria, whatever it is that they have. And even if they are sure of themselves and are coming out, that needs to be discussed in as supportive a space as possible. And also, and although we have examples of, you know, schools, et cetera, doing some wonderful stuff. Again, it is about the consistency, how is it spread out across the county so that a young person in one part of the county feels equally supported as a young person in school in another part? Uh, you know, if they want to come out, for instance. And again, the, in for the, the voluntary groups, the hubs, the information that we share should be inclusive to all groups. You know, not just males, females, but you know, really gender-inclusive, gender identity-inclusive approach so that we are catering to people at various stages of their gender identity and transition. I think, you know, I, I see this as one of the most important things we can do in Lincolnshire as part of our population-based public health approach. Seeing, you know, starting with, with young people and their carers and seeing what needs to be done. I think we not only help young people then, but we also prevent a lot of problems coming up in adulthood, saving them a lot of anguish and, you know, uh getting help in early. Thank you.
Thanks, Ananta. Uh, there is a question for you, Dan, in the chat box. The Asheville Project Limited has asked The Asheville Project Limited has asked you that you, you were talking about the hubs in town, so what about the rural communities? Where are they supposed to go?
Yeah, I mean, it's a good question. So we've already started thinking about that, actually. So there's, because we're down near Rutland, Rutland have got this thing called the Rural Coffee Connect, I think it's called. Where, and it, and it chimes in with an idea we had about how do we, in effect, load MindSpace into a van and go around, say, village halls on a rolling rotor? And in effect, take MindSpace and the, and the, and the tea and chat sessions or whatever to different villages. In the hope that it's, it's, everything MindSpace does is always about, and so what can you do to help this? You know, so actually, we'll, we'll come to your village, but actually, if there's, you know, a few regulars, how do you go, you know, is there a way you guys could maybe meet? At another, you know, if we're doing this every month, could you do, you know, in a fortnight's time so that it's every two weeks in the village? And then you build them up, you know, because this comes back to that community capacity building. So, yeah, I, I, I get that Lincolnshire is a really rural county and it's a real tricky one. I think if we can, if we can get the hubs working in all the market towns, and then in effect using those as a springboard for how do you provide the support out into your, your local rural communities? But it's about where people live and, live and do stuff, isn't it? And actually, I think there's a bit about going out to people, but there's also a bit of, well, you come to market on a Friday in, in X town, you know, is, 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 you know, what, what groups and things are running on a Friday that you could connect with that actually are right up your alley that you just don't know about? So I think, I think there's a bit of how we support communities to do it, how we let communities know what's already happening, and, and ultimately, how do we join the dots? With what's already going on better.
Thanks, Dan. There is, I can, Nick, is it your legacy hand? There was somebody's hand up called Haya, it's RC. Please, can you introduce yourself and ask your question?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep, yeah. This is about being a carer. Listen, I'm Rebecca Christopher and I'm a volunteer for LPFT and things, and I work like with dementia people and, and this. And this is a question about carer role. I actually am a carer for my father with, this is before the pandemic. And I actually have mental health, I had mental health problems since I was the age of eight. And because I'll tell you, I got sexually and physically abused. But before the pandemic and about the carer situation and about before asking, I actually, it took me as a carer, eight weeks to get my father some help with a mental health team and actually in the right sort of help, do you mean where he needed to be in the service. And actually, I had to have him with me for eight weeks until it was okay or if it was right for him to go in a mental health, say, hospital ward. And basically, because my father was really unwell, they wanted to take him to Surrey, but then when the doctors and hos- hospital people, nurses come to assess my dad, he wasn't well enough. And it's just, it means sort of from a carer's perspective, it is a lot of hard work and with the being a carer and sort of a mental health user as well, and it, it's just, I don't know how to explain it really. It's very hard, do you mean? And when the chap before was talking about the carers and whatever else, I do sort of respect that and I feel that because with Covid going on, it is more harder work for the carers. And it's like only sort of by challenging and asking questions, it's only sort of, I can actually find out more information and like come in here today, get, getting help. And I know there'll be more people out there like me who need help.
Thanks, Rebecca. Ananta, do you want to answer that question?
Sorry to hear about your experience. As you said, you know, very traumatic and in these times, I think, you know, carers are being.
You are mute, Ananta.
Sorry about that, sorry. So Rebecca, I just wanted to say I'm really sorry to hear about your experience and I hope your father is in a better place. I do realise the extra, you know, the needs and demands that have been placed on carers as a result of the pandemic and how much, you know, carers are supporting their friends, family members and loved ones. I agree with you totally about making sure that carers are involved more and that there is more awareness of what is there. So one of the things I am taking away from this is there is information about things that are going on out there that A firstly, we may not all be aware of, so we are not sharing it appropriately. There is a need for, I think, all age carers and all age communities to be more joined up, because people have raised issues about carers, young carers, communities, adults, et cetera. So I think I take away those points from here, Rebecca. Regarding, you know, people being your father, you know, potentially being sent very far away and hundreds of miles away. That is something that LPFT is working on and we have managed to reduce the numbers of people being sent out of area quite significantly, and we hope to keep it that way. We have, you know, we have not only changed services internally, but we've started things like the Community Rehab Service. And, you know, we have employed more people within the trust. And we are working with the government to try and see if we can get funding to increase the number of wards and beds available within Lincolnshire. So all this is in progress and we are hoping very much to completely reduce the numbers of people going out of area and, you know, just keep reducing them further. But I, I, I totally sympathise with your condition and I think having to care for somebody and especially if they are being sent far away is very traumatic and very distressing. So I take on board the points from learning from today about being more joined up and providing and sharing information and making more of an effort to link up with the communities, the community hubs and the volunteers doing the work. So I'll take that back. Thank you.
Thanks, Ananta. The last question from Emma. Emma wants to know whether the information about carers impacted by mental health and signpost to support, do we have all this information on connect to support? So support available to carers, is that on connect to support? Shab, do you know that?
Sorry, that wasn't, that wasn't my connect, that, that wasn't my question. Sorry, that was unclear. The question was about how well we identify young carers. And, and my second point was, I'm, I'm just assuming that all the information people have mentioned today is on connect to support.
What, what I'll do is, we've had a lot of information today. And what I'll do is I'll go through everything, save everything, collate everything, and then sort of make sure that I know who said what. And then if we need to put anything onto connect support, that I will get them to contact connect support directly. So I'll try and make sure that I do all that, because there's a lot of good work out there that we, not all of us know about.
Thanks, Shab. And thank you all for your questions and thanks to the panel for answering those questions. Derek, I'm going to hand it over to you to do your closing remarks in one minute.
Thanks for that, Shab. I think my, my camera's exhausted. It, it's not turning on, which is probably a good thing on a, on a Monday afternoon anyway, that you don't have to look at me. I think very quickly, just to try to summarise, the, the key points from my perspective are we need to listen, we need to share, we need to care, we need to do that for individuals and for groups, including for carers. Lots of conversation about what we need across the county, especially in light of the Covid pandemic and, and the challenges that's brought. And lots of conversation about what we already have, actually, in terms of the universal offer, in terms of formal services, whether local authority, NHS or, or third sector services. And also informal, like Spilsby, the One Stop Shop, things like that. And the need to think about and develop mixed models as, as we come out of the pandemic and, and, and map it out a bit better. And I think the other thing I took away from this was I need to really try to map out in our system, describe what the range of services, whether formal or informal that are out there looks like. I don't know, that's something we're doing through the work of the group. And that ranges from suicide prevention and, and, you know, crisis care right the way through to how do we help children, young people and adults maintain our mental health wellbeing, our mental wellbeing, really. And that comes back again to the listen, share care, which I, which I think is, is a nice phrase to use. All, all in all, I think for me, it's around joining things up and trying to come out of this pandemic with a more long-term approach to mental health and wellbeing, rather than what we often get, which is short-term periods of funding. So that, they're my reflections. We'll pick that up as a team. Obviously, we'll, we'll share that with all our wider partners. But I'll, I'll hand it back over to you, Cackley.
Thanks, Derek. And thank you all for, to all the presenters and to all of you who have joined us and asked questions and took part in the discussions. And I would also like to thank Shab, Sue, John, Beth and Gemma, without whom I would not have been able to organise this webinar. Thank you all. Thanks and goodbye.
Thanks, everyone. Bye.